Welcome everyone to the January 21st meeting of the Jericho Planning Commission. My name is Sabina Arts and I am filling in for our Chair Susan tonight as I am the clerk of the Planning Commission. We have a review of the agenda right now. We will have public comment, two or minutes, and then we will develop, we will devote the bulk of our time to a presentation from the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. We will then follow some work on drafted bylaw amendments on residential density. And then we will shift into reports of their business and then wrap up and plan for our next meeting, which is on February 4th. Okay, so. Does anyone have any changes that need to happen on the agenda? Okay. No changes on the agenda, so we'll move to item number three, which is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience or online who has public comment on items that do not appear on the agenda? You can raise your hand if you're online. Or you can step forward here in the room and join us at the table. Nobody? Any hands online? No. Okay, no public comment. So then we will move to item four, which is to approve the minutes of January 7th, 2025. Are there any corrections or amendments to the minutes that were published as a draft? Susan, any comments?
No comments.
Okay, all right, no additions to the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Motion to approve.
I will go second.
Second, okay, so Wendy made the motion, Heidi seconded it. All in favor of approving the minutes of January 7th?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, any abstentions? All right. Minutes are approved. Now we will move on to item number five, which is a presentation from our colleagues at the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. And they are going to be speaking with us on the regional future land use map updates. So we have Darren Shippler here and he will be leading the discussion, so I'm going to stop sharing Darren and you should be able to take over.
Great, thank you Sabina, and I also want to mention that my colleague Melanie Needle is here, just taking notes and supporting as needed, but thanks for having us here tonight. We are very grateful to be able to share some time on your agenda. I know you've got a lot going on and we'll try to keep this as brief and streamlined as possible, though we do have a lot to cover, so without further ado, I'm going to share my screen and hope that you're all seeing this title slide says Act 181 Housing Targets and Regional Planning. Excellent, great. So, we are here to talk about these topics. You've hopefully heard a little something about Act 181 already. If you haven't, that's okay, we're here to give you the Act 181 101 and talk about also how we want to roll this out to the Jericho community. We're visiting all of our member municipalities to include you in this process and put together a plan to collaborate because while a lot of this is going to be some business as usual work in terms of how we do our regional future land use map and our planning processes, some things are changing which we really want our communities to be involved with and have a voice in. So, let me start by talking about what we hope to cover tonight. We first are going to do that overview of Act 181 and our regional planning process. It's going to be similar to what you've seen from us in the past and what you do here in Jericho. We'll talk a little bit about some interim Act 250 exemptions for housing that are already happening and how those play into this Act 181 work. Then we'll talk about what Act 181 is actually changing with regard to regional and local future land use mapping and planning. Specifically, permanent Act 250 exemptions, which can help spur housing development in your community in the places that you want it. We'll talk about the state designation program, how that's going to direct benefits to your community that you already have and how those will continue to be available to you, but hopefully with a few, a little less red tape. And then we'll talk about housing targets, which are part of Act 181 and for CCRPC's process, integral to how we do our land use mapping. But we do hope to have some time towards the end to talk about the outreach plan for not Jericho, or not Charlotte, but Jericho. I apologize, we are giving this presentation all over the county, so you might see some things and hear from other communities. It is not because we are mixing your guys up. I know we're here in Jericho. So we want to talk about an outreach plan for your community about how we can bring this information to everyone in your community and specifically to people who want to have a voice in it, not just those who are interested in land use planning already, but those who maybe don't always have a voice in land use planning, environmental justice focused populations, and we'll talk more about who those might be and how they can provide input. And then we also want to get your input on the draft map that we have already put together, but that we want your input on because this is a collaborative process and we want to make sure we're going to get it right because when we go to the state to get this approved, we want it to be something that everybody's on board with. That all sound good? Great. So, Act 181 is almost an update to Act 250, and you've probably heard Act 250 and some of the history around it. Act 181 is really trying to change, not change much, but to advance the planning goals that we've already had in Vermont and that we've been trying to implement for the last 70 years almost, which is maintaining Vermont's historic settlement pattern of compact village and urban centers separated by rural countryside, really creating that distinction while allowing our development goals to be met. So, Act 181 is trying to help promote diverse housing options, use the infrastructure in our communities more efficiently, streamline permitting and protect natural resources all at once. We're really trying to take this Act 250 idea into the 21st century and meet some of the challenges that we are seeing with balancing all of these different demands and goals. So we're really, again, trying to advance smart growth. It's something we've been doing for a long time. Specifically, this is how Act 181 is going to change things. We're modernizing how we do mapping of land use planning in Vermont and how we direct public investments to these places that we have established as where we want to grow. And we've recognized that Act 250 has been around for a while and could maybe use some updates under the hood. And we're really trying to make sure that it is focused on location-based jurisdiction where the level of review is commensurate, not with how big the project is necessarily, although that's still a part of things, but also how well that project fits with our planning goals that we have set out in our regional and local plans. So really, we're trying to make sure that where you want to, where we want to grow, it's easy to grow. Where we want to protect resources, they are protected. Where we've already invested in infrastructure that we, and where we want to invest in infrastructure, that that's where the growth is going. And that municipal regulations are aligned with state regulations when it comes to how development is done. So, we're really just trying to make sure that all of these pieces of the development puzzle and the planning puzzle fit together a little better. There's been some friction over the years, so we're trying to reduce that. In terms of what this actually means from a nuts and bolts perspective, there's a few new requirements for regional plans, and you may have heard some of the new requirements for municipal plans talked about in recent years. We got, that was part of Act 47, the Home Act. Act 181 focused a little more on regional plans, so in terms of the process, we have to incorporate meaningful participation as defined by the environmental justice law, both at a regional and local level. And that's why we're going to try to do some outreach to environmental justice focused populations and make sure that we're talking about environmental justice, climate resilience and housing in areas planned for growth, bringing those additional new purposes and planning goals to our work. Although we've been doing this at CCRPC, hopefully pretty well for the last couple of years. So this is new for us, but it might be new for some of our other folks across the state. We also have a new standardized future land use map menu of districts and menu of planning areas. So we're trying to make sure that when you talk about a downtown or village center in Chittingen County, it means the same thing as a downtown or village center in Brattleboro or Wyndham County or in Rutland County. And that we're able to sort of put all of these things on the same scale and not say, well, Chittingen County is one thing, but the rest of Vermont is something else. So, they'll see some new terms and maybe a few new ways of looking at things, but overall, we hope that these new districts and these new, this new terminology is pretty well aligned with what we've been doing already and what you're familiar with. We'll get to the details in a second, but the other thing I'll mention is that with regard to housing targets, which were introduced by Act 47, the Home Act, we now have to incorporate a substantial majority of our housing in order to reach those housing targets within areas planned for growth. The areas that we've already talked about are those center metro and suburban and village centers. Those translate to new districts, but we're trying to say, look, and you know, we're putting all of our chips on those land use areas. We've already been doing that in Chittingen County, but we're really making sure that it's clear in statute now. So, as I mentioned, we, this isn't new. Chittingen County has been doing future land use mapping in collaboration with our communities since we've been Chittingen County Regional Planning Commission. We're trying to make sure that our work is based on your work, the great work that you've done at the local level, so that we're not throwing all of that out the window or misaligning with your goals. Our current map is based on local zoning, in fact, and it's not even necessarily aligned with the state designation program. It's a little more expansive and hopefully our new process is going to reflect that a little better. But as I said, we've got these new categories that we are using based on what's in statute. And the other thing that's new is that the state land use review board, which is a new entity created out of the downtown board to some, to some extent. That entity is now going to be reviewing our plan, which had no oversight before. Once it was adopted by CCRPC's board, that was the end of the line. Now we get a confirmation at the state level that our plan meets the goals of statute and confers some of the benefits that I'll talk about later with regard to Act 250 jurisdiction and state planning benefits, state planning designation, sorry, state planning designation benefits. Sorry, I tripped over my words there. So because we're going through that higher level of review with the state, we want to make sure we get things right at the base level with you as the communities that are impacted by this. So, for context, Chris suggested that we throw this slide in, and I think it's a great idea. This is what Jericho's future land use map is in your relatively newly adopted town plan. But again, it's fairly familiar to you. It's been like this overall for a long time, but you've done some great work recently to refine some of these planning areas and really talk about where you might want to grow in the future, what some of the considerations around natural resource protection should be and what that means on your future land use map. So, we used this as the basis for creating our map and we want to make sure that we're aligned as much as possible within the restrictions of statute, and I'll mention a little more detail when we show our draft map, but it might not look quite the same because of how we have to do our regional map. The thing to keep in mind is that your local map is going to be a little more specific and on the ground and fine grained compared to our regional map, which is a lot broader brush because we're covering the whole county. That doesn't mean we're in conflict. It just means we're layered one step different from you. So, just wanted to put that up there for context and show that you've got village cores, village neighborhoods, residential infill. Those are what we would think of as your areas planned for growth. And you've got agricultural conservation and natural resource protection planning areas, areas where we want to leave, leave them alone a little more and focus on the natural resources that exist there. Plus your river overlay and your wetland overlay and your flood hazard zones. We definitely don't want to build there. So, in terms of how this will translate into a new regional map, these are the new categories, the new framework that are listed in statute that we have to follow with regard to our regional plan. Most of these should look familiar, even if the term isn't exactly the same. It should sound like something you've heard. We've got downtown center, village center, planned growth area, village area. Those are hopefully pretty familiar. I'll skip over transition for a second. Enterprise areas are more of a area that is primarily commercial or industrial in nature. It may also be an area of natural resource extraction. There's also resource-based recreation, recognizing that there are areas of Vermont that are really focused on outdoor activities like skiing or lake shores and lake shore resorts. And recognizing that those are an important part of our both natural heritage and our economic drivers and our cultural values. And then we have this rural category, which is actually quite complex and covers a majority of our land area. That's broken up into some subcategories, but the idea there is that it's a mostly natural landscape. In terms of how those translate to some of the designation programs, you'll notice that downtown center and village center, hopefully familiar terms for those in the planning world, are now grouped in this center designation. So rather than having those two be separate, they are ultimately going to be under one umbrella within the state planning designation, state designation, community investment program. So all of the things like state historic preservation tax credits, the downtown transportation fund, the Better Places programs and some of the transportation incentives that are out there, some of the priorities for state investments in water and wastewater and other infrastructure, that's where those end up going. Some of those also go to the neighborhoods, those residential areas that surround the downtowns and village centers, but are not necessarily the commercial and civic cores, just the places where most people live. So that includes those two planned growth area and village area categories, trying to encompass a little bit of a variation in scale of development and scale of future growth, recognizing that planned growth areas where we really want to see a lot of change. Village areas are important and may see some change, maybe on a different scale because of where they are in the context around them. Those two are in the neighborhood program and Jericho is currently working on a bylaw modernization grant to do some zoning work in your what you call village areas. I believe, let me skip back, just double check if I got that terminology right. Village neighborhood area is sort of the corollary there and maybe some residential infill.
It's the village, it's a village center zone we're looking at, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so your village core is the corollary to village center. Village area in the new framework is more of that village neighborhood. If that makes sense? If not, it'll, it'll sink in hopefully, but stop me if I get something wrong or if it seems confusing. So that's where things like the neighborhood development area program are going to be redirected, where we're talking about incentives for housing growth, things like fee waivers for housing development through the wastewater program and Act 250, some level of perhaps Act 250 relief in those areas. And maybe some investment in infrastructure. So that's kind of how things are set up on the planning and the community investment side. From an Act 250 side, what we're seeing is mostly status quo in a majority of these areas. But there are going to be some differences and some steps up, up in terms of Act 250 relief and then removing some jurisdiction. So there is this idea of full exemption. Jericho or any community can apply for complete exemption of, from Act 250 for any development within its community. And that means that the municipality is taking on Act 250 review in those areas. That's not necessarily for every community. It's a relatively high bar to meet and does require a lot of local capacity. But there may be some benefits and some reason to pursue that for Jericho. We don't want to shut that out. But what we see is perhaps more likely for Jericho and a lot of the ex-urban, sub-rural communities, if you want to call it that, is this tier 1B partial exemption from Act 250 for certain types and scales of development. That partial exemption can only apply within areas that the region has mapped as downtown, village center, planned growth area or village area. But within that, the community, the town has some choice as to where those exemptions may apply. But everything else in this transition enterprise, resource-based recreation and rural categories are still going to be subject to normal Act 250 jurisdiction, perhaps even more in this tier three category, which Act 250 is going to be, the natural resources board is going to be putting out rules about in the coming year. That's a higher level of jurisdiction and a higher bar to pass for development. I'm going to pause there because I probably overwhelmed you and ask if there's any questions off the bat about what's going on here? Whether this is making sense so far or if all of your eyes are just glazed over. I can't quite see because you're really small on my screen right now.
I would like a translation. Chris Sheehan, if you could, because when Darren was saying where he thought we were working on our zoning update compared to where you think we are, given these different designations, if you could just reinforce that one time, that'd be helpful.
So for our zoning, it's the village district, the village center district, VCTR.
Okay.
And I believe for the matrix, the, your graphic Darren, that that falls under village area.
For the regionally. That sounds right to me, Chris. I also recognize that the map I'm showing here is actually your future land use plan map, not necessarily your zoning map, and there might be some slight differences there, so apologies if that's confusing.
Did you follow that Heidi?
No, can you go back to the framework, Darren, just to keep up? That is a beautiful graphic. I had it in my head, yeah.
So, my understanding is under the regional future land use categories, not all of those apply to us in Jericho. There are only certain ones that apply. One of them that applies is the village area.
Okay.
And within the village area designation from the state category, our village centers fall under that.
Oh, thank you. Okay, okay.
So this purple village center is something that doesn't apply to us, the one that's listed next to downtown?
Right.
I think that's right. Is that correct Darren?
Uh, no, so I'm glad we're talking about this. I believe Jericho will actually have village center areas, multiples, because you have multiple villages. You'll probably have some planned growth area because you have some water service and maybe wastewater, depending on where that goes. And then you'll probably also have some village areas, and that's probably really confusing. We'll talk about why and what those statutory criteria mean, but essentially the village center is your current village center zoning district probably in the area where you are having those act, or those state designation benefits. The planned growth area, village area, there's a little bit of fuzziness around where those boundaries might be with each other. But those are the surrounding village neighborhood, maybe some of your residential infill or low-density residential zones potentially. Those are some questions that we want to work out with you because Jericho's map and your process is going to be interesting, given that you're working on some changes right now. And I think we'll want to maybe set up a follow-up to this meeting to maybe work through those details a little more.
So I want to clarify something else. So if we can go back to the slide that has the regional, the current regional land use plan.
Yes.
Okay. So on the current regional land use plan, you can see Jericho is just like all this yellow color for where our village area is, right?
Yes.
Will that become more fine-grained based on your transect?
Yes, exactly. So that, all that yellow area is going to get split up into a finer grain of village center, maybe planned growth area, maybe village area.
Yeah, I've got it. So that's what I was thinking. So, we have a village zone, not to make this, we have a village zone. That, that may align with the village area designation. Our village centers may align with their village center designation, and then we may have other areas that fall under the growth areas that
Okay.
will be, this is what we will be.
Okay, okay. And then for us, the reason that, no offense Darren, the reason that we care is that it, it enables us to be aligned with both the region and the state and to be easily identified for various kinds of funding or support that we might want because of designation.
Yes, and if we go to the transect slide again, there are these different levels of exemption, the tier 1, tier 1B.
And that will be important.
Right, so if I'm reading the graphic right, the tier 1B partial exemption will go all the way through to the village area designation.
It can. It's up to your community to choose if you want it to extend that whole area, but it is eligible, yes.
So that would be a implication of something we would benefit from more.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm sure I'll ask it like five more times, but that was a really good start.
That's great. Hopefully the answer will save each time.
And we're all learning together, so it's, it's good to ask these questions.
Go ahead, Susan.
Okay, thank you. So I had a question about the future land use map and its regulatory effect compared with a, with a zoning district map. So like, my understanding is the future land use map lives within the town plan and the regional plan. But where the rubber meets the road is in the zoning regulations and in the zoning district map. And over time, I guess the goal is to migrate your zoning districts to be more in line with your future land use map. So, other than like grants and exemptions and qualifications and stuff, what is the regulatory effect of the future land use map for if Jericho has a future land use map?
Yes, so you, Jericho, good, good question, Susan. Think of this as we're operating on two different levels. There's Jericho's future land use map and zoning regulations. That's how you manage your development at a local scale. There's also how we manage things at a regional and statewide scale, which is historically been just through Act 250, which is essentially just a zoning regulation in state law. There was originally a future land use map for the state. It kind of got, fell by the, kind of fell by the wayside, and we've just been operating on zoning regulations since the 70s. Act 181 is kind of trying to bring the planning back into statewide zoning, or rather statewide land use regulation. So what we're saying is the regional maps developed at that middle scale of zooming in are going to drive where that regulation happens through these Act 250 jurisdiction areas and through some of these state investments and these ways that Act 250 might view the future land use categories. Does that make sense? So we're still going to have two layers of regulation, but we're trying to make them less duplicative. We're trying to say, let's talk about regional and state issues within regional and state regulation. Let's talk about local issues within local regulation.
So ultimately, the goal would be to have, you were talking about duplication, but I'm thinking about discrepancy. We want to have as little discrepancy as possible between our local zoning districts map and the land use map.
Yes, we're going to try to keep everything in lockstep in terms of saying the same thing for the same areas.
So when does it transition from a future land use map to just a land use map?
Ooh, I think it will always be a future land use map in terms of this is where we see things being into the future. But in terms of how we get from this being sort of a conceptual idea to being a little more real, that is a little bit of our next slide. So, as I mentioned, our regional.
Hang on Darren, we have a question, sorry.
Oh, sure.
Sorry Darren, does, and hi Darren, I, you and I have worked together.
Sorry Darren, does, and hi Darren, um, I, you and I have worked together a little bit in my previous role as chair before well, housing is so nice to see your face again.
Yes, good to see you S J.
Such a good resource. Um, so does this, does this level, uh, does this increase or add a hurdle to a municipality that may want to change the boundaries of some of our zoning districts if they don't align with the regional land use map?
Excellent question, and this is actually a good slide to talk about that. So the way that things are going to work going forward and the way they've maybe worked in the past, except people, uh, towns haven't really been changing their land use districts much, and Jericho is one of the first to do it in a while. Uh, the idea is that a local plan and a local map has to be consistent with the regional plan as well as its neighboring towns. So we've done that through a confirmation of the local plan through the regional planning commission. We say, great, you've done your local work, it's consistent with our work. And if there were any issue where, um, for instance, Jericho wanted to change things, we would change that on our regional map at the next update or, you know, when we are able to make those changes. That hasn't really meant much in a regional plan because regional plans haven't been regulatory in the sense of, uh, dictating much about uh, where these investments happen and where Act fifty jurisdiction is. It's been mostly advisory. Because they are now more than advisory, our regional plan is going to go for review through that state land use review board. So if Jericho wanted to change something after we've gone through this adoption process, what we would essentially do is update the regional plan as Jericho updates its local plan and we all kind of go to the land use review board together. What's interesting about this is that at a regional level, we have to kind of do this all at once for all of our communities. We have to make sure that all of our communities and our, uh, future land use planning areas are consistent with statute and consistent with our local plan. And if any of our, um, if the state land use review board finds that our plan isn't approvable or confirmable, then everyone's on the hook for losing their designation benefits and losing that Act two fifty jurisdiction. So there's a big incentive for all of us to get it right. And we will be working collaboratively with our communities to talk about changing land use districts and what that looks like. And I'm going to pop back to this last slide, uh, one more time to talk about transition areas. It's an optional, uh, land use category that we can use to say, you know, this is an area where some change might be happening and we're not really sure exactly where it's going to land yet because we're not sure, we haven't done the planning work. But we want to mark it out and say, this is something we're dealing with, this is something we're considering, land use review board. We're working on this with our communities and we may come back and say we want this to be a planned growth area in the future, for instance. So that's the mechanism by which we can work through a change. Does that make sense? Okay, I didn't quite hear, but I'm hoping that's a yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Last thing on the slide, when we get our approval from the state land use review board, that triggers automatic state designation for all of our areas on our map that we've said are uh, downtown village center, playing growth and village areas. So you immediately get those benefits. You don't have to go back to the state land use review board or the downtown board as it was before to get your benefits and to get those incentives for your community. You don't even have to go for renewals. That's our job now. That also, uh, that land use review board approval gives you that opt-in for exemption areas. Tier one B, that partial exemption is approved automatically with the regional plan. If you wanted to go for tier one A, that full exemption, that's actually something that Jericho would apply directly to the state land use review board to get. But we'll talk about that if you're interested in it in future conversations. I recognize we're running a little tight on time and I want to get to a couple more things. This is just to mention, there are some existing interim temporary exemptions from Act two fifty for housing that are in effect right now for areas in and around village centers in Jericho's case, such as, um, priority housing projects, that's P H Ps, which are a certain type of development that's essentially affordable housing. Uh, within a half a mile of designated areas have an unlimited number of units in terms of Act two fifty jurisdiction. So no matter what they propose and how many units, they're not going to get Act two fifty review. They're still going to get local review and they're still going to have to meet all of the standards required by your local regulations, your local permits, as well as state permits such as wetlands and wastewater and so on. But in terms of meeting those state criteria in Act two fifty, they don't have to worry about those because it's been an onerous process for certain projects. Uh, for village centers and an area quarter mile around them, there's a cap of fifty units before you hit Act two fifty jurisdiction. And there are also type-based, commercial conversion, accessory dwelling and hotel motel conversions to housing. Those have exemption as well. There's more information about that in the slideshow. I'm going to skip those slides um, and just talk a little bit about timeline.
Eye to infrastructure though?
These currently are not exactly because they're simply tied to those designations. In the new, uh, framework, we are looking at infrastructure specifically as one of the criteria for certain land use districts. So it is going to get a little finer grained in the next stage, which is happening now through twenty twenty-six, sorry.
From the planning commission on the, the previous slide.
Yes, yes. I'm glad you're asking.
Uh, it was about transit corridors. Um, so did that have to be a certain kind of road? Or is it just measured by distance, one quarter mile?
It is a quarter mile from the road that a major bus line is located along. So, um, things are a little in limbo right now with how Green Mountain Transit is changing their, their service. But if you go to the Act two fifty exemption map viewer, it'll show you where those, uh, transit corridors are. And it essentially for Jericho would only be along Route fifteen where the Jeffersonville commuter was going. I believe those stay in effect even after that goes away, but let's, I'll confirm that with you. In any case, it aligns almost entirely with your village center plus quarter mile buffers.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yes. So we're here in twenty twenty-five, we're working with you on updated regional plans and working with you on those boundary changes and those designations. The land use review board has been installed. They are, um, starting to look at criteria that they will use to review regional plans and also working with that, uh, tier three rulemaking and criteria at sea. Don't worry too much about that. Um, next year, C C R P C will eventually, will be going to the land use review board for approval of our plan, which we are going to get uh, locally approved, regionally approved, uh, through a normal process this spring, summer, fall. Uh, and the idea behind that is that we want to get things in place by the time those interim exemptions end and the designation program shifts over to this new, uh, framework. Uh, there's a few other things out in the horizon, but this is here mostly for reference.
Question.
Question, yeah.
It's me and Wendy. So that, um, one block, the municipality twenty twenty-five, that says we have to apply for new designation for boundaries by October twenty twenty-five? That is, so that the town of Jericho needs to initiate? Or do we?
No, so that is more about working with us through, working with the regional planning commission. Uh, you can apply for tier one A exemption starting in October. Um, but if you have worked with us on our regional plan and we've gotten those things right, uh, we are going to be getting your designations and your, um, Act two fifty, tier one B and tier, uh, tier one B exemptions as part of our regional plan. So that's a little confusing. I think we should change that, uh, point on the slide because it's. Yeah.
So what you have under two twenty-five is something that affects the municipalities, but it's something that C C R P C is taking the lead on?
Yes, and actually I'm just remembering what this is all about. So under the current designation program, we're in a bit of a transition time where you can still apply, for instance, for neighborhood development area by October. So you can, the other thing I haven't mentioned about the existing future designations is anything that has a designation currently, so your village centers for sure and neighborhood development area, if you obtain that by October. Those are grandfathered in, they're automatically in the new land use categories that correspond to those designations of center and neighborhood. There, so there is a little incentive for you to do that work right now because then it doesn't even have to be a question on our regional map of like, does it meet the criteria or not? It's just there. Ultimately, the criteria are very similar, so it's up to you if you want to do that work. Um, we have assistance right now to help you apply to neighborhood development area for neighborhood development area designation. So let us know if that's of interest. And I think we've already been in touch with Chris about that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, thanks for asking. Um, this is a big block of text about housing targets. I'm going to help you focus on the bolded part. We have actually, as of today, received the statewide and regional housing targets through the statewide housing need assessment. So we will be starting the process of disaggregating that across all of our municipalities, which is a new requirement of us in our regional plans. And we will be assigning a housing target to every municipality in Chittenden County. And we have to take into consideration all of these factors, price, quality, unit size, zoning district, et cetera, and talk about the total housing investment. But what we need to give you is simply a number. And it's going to be based on a few things that I'll talk about in a second, but it's really just saying we're going to get more specific about identifying housing need. It's already a requirement in local and regional plans. We're just putting a number on it instead of saying we need a lot of housing or a little housing. It's, it's a number now. That's the takeaway from this slide. So to get more specific, we are, through our planning advisory committee, which Chris sits on, have come up with an approach to how to disaggregate these targets and allocate them realistically and fairly and with consideration to planning work that's been done across each municipality. It's really, like I said, going to be a total number of units, but we've based that on a few considerations such as your historic growth trends, infrastructure available, what's in your municipal plan for where you want housing, what's in your zoning regulations and natural resource constraints. We'll talk more about this at a future meeting once we have digested that state and regional target and done the math and shown you where we, how we got there. But that's one of the things we're going to be working with you on in terms of this um, land use map is to make sure that that aligns well with your housing target and vice versa. So with that, uh, I think we've done some questions and discussion. I want to give you a peek at your map and I want to talk about uh, how to bring this conversation to your community and hopefully in a little more uh, digestible fashion and a little more like, you know, third grade reading level so that it's, uh, you know, we all spend forty-five minutes talking about it and get some feedback from the community about what they want to see and what matters to you as Jericho residents about what should be on this map. So I'll ask a question. Do you want to look at the map or do you want to talk about the plan, the engagement plan first?
Yeah, let's look at the map Darren and then we can chat about the outage.
Yeah, it sounds good. So I'm going to flash up something real quick. So before I undo the big unveil, um, these are some questions I want to have us think about briefly. Um, and these are things we can revisit later, uh, in a future meeting about what's going on with the map, specifically what stands out, what is maybe surprising. And then as we get a little deeper, does it feel like we've captured the community priorities? Are there areas that are overemphasized or overlooked? And any major changes that you see, any major conflicts that we need to be aware of in this version one point O, which will get updated as we continue doing this work. So here we go. So I'm going to zoom out to start and give you a sense of where the region sits. You'll see, uh, these colors should correspond to what we saw in that framework. And I had sent along with Chris uh, a key for you to look at, um, but I'll pull it up here as well. So again, we're running through those, um, more growth oriented to less growth oriented, more conservation oriented. Um, and most of what you see here, this tan is what is rural general right now. It'll actually look a little more, I'll even flash it up for you. Um, it'll look a little more filled in with more greens and teals because that's the conservation and working lands, agriculture and forestry categories. We're still working on exactly where those uh, sit because the, the G I S has given us trouble. So we didn't want to go into too much detail yet. We really want to focus on those growth oriented areas. So Jericho is in the regional context, mostly rural. But when we zoom in, we see those areas that correspond to your villages, all three of them, Jericho Corners, uh, Riverside, Underhill Flats and Jericho Center. And what we want to get a sense of is, did we get it mostly right? As I mentioned, um, there are statutory criteria we have to follow in terms of how we apply these categories to your land use map. So we can't stray too far from what's on here, but I think there are some questions we had for Jericho specifically around those village uh, areas, the, what you call village neighborhood and maybe your low density residential zoning district. So it seems like you want to do some more work there and we haven't even really dived into what you might want to be doing around, um, the high school. We know that's something you're on your, um, on your horizon, but, um, we wanted to have this conversation before we put anything on paper. So I'll stop talking and let you all react.
On colors, just because it's not exact. So our village centers are planned growth areas? Or, or they center down, oh, they're downtown centers and villages. That's the dark purple.
You don't actually see any planned growth area here in Jericho. We've got some aspects, so that's the color difference you can see. I think we might apply some planned growth area here. This was just our first take, but, um, we'll talk, we can talk about what this criteria mean. Essentially, it's areas that have the infrastructure to support denser residential and maybe mixed use development along with a walkable transportation network. Uh, so that was probably what drove a lot of the decisions in Jericho upfront, but I think you're doing some work there.
And so particularly in Jericho Corners, what there, what is shown here as a village area is part of our village center zone.
Yeah. And I'll throw these up too, just for context. These are the current state designations and I'll point out it's a little more restrictive because the state downtown review board had a lot to say about the boundaries of these areas because they were trying to be specific about where those investments went. But we're allowed to move things a little further out based on where we see the civic and commercial centers being and where Jericho's own planning and zoning has, uh, identified those as. So we tried to respect those local, um, priorities a little more in that mapping.
You don't have our zoning districts on here too, do you?
We don't at the moment, but one of our next, um, I think steps with you is to, to do that overlay and make sure that it kind of lines up. What I can do is, uh, as Chris mentioned before, this is your current, uh, our current regional planning areas, which is based on your local zoning. So we're not getting the fine-grained detail, but we're seeing the overall boundaries. And you can see that we're pretty much copying and pasting and maybe even going a little further in some spots. The areas where we've had to shrink a little bit from that yellow area are specifically around floodplains and river corridors. And that's a statutory criteria because we're saying we're not going to try to cite a whole lot of new development in places that are going to flood or erode away in a major storm. Um, but they're still functionally part of your communities. And then the other one is this kind of disconnected uh, Meadow Drive and Foothills Drive off of Raceway Road. That's something we can talk about in terms of whether that feels close enough into the village to be part of that village area. Um, but because of how separated it is, we initially took it out just, um, because it seemed like it was a little far out to be considered walkable to the villages.
So Darren, I, I think, uh, we are going to have a lot of layers of things to look at, right? So we have the existing regionally induced map, the, the proposed regionally then our future land use map. Where all of those stack up, what the edges look like and albeit it sounds like there's an opportunity to discuss what happens at those edges that they either can expand or shrink a little bit. Do you think there's opportunity to even go beyond what the existing future land use map says?
Yes.
Okay.
There absolutely is, and that's, I think, part of our, part of the conversation around, I know. Where can I pull this back in? Um, let's go back to Jericho's map here. So you've shown potentially some activity happening around um, Brown's Trace along near the high school and some of these intersections. So those are some areas that I think we want to talk about with Jericho and get a better understanding of what your intentions for those are, what planning work you want to do there. And what would likely happen is those areas where you really want to tie in you know, infrastructure, walkability and housing development or potentially mixed use development. We can mark as transition for now and say Jericho is doing the work to get that to be a part of the community. And at some point in a future iteration of the plan, we can get that into one of these other categories and really get the benefits and, um, investments going there. Margarita, I heard you say you can't hear anything. Is everyone else able to hear okay? Okay.
I know you, I know there were three big goals for the meeting. One was just getting us all educated on the laws and the regs and what's coming. The other was to get input on outreach and the other was to talk about the working relationship between CCRPC and the planning commission. We have a full agenda. We only have five minutes left for this, so I don't know what you want to cover or how we want to wrap this up.
Yeah, um, thanks for pulling us back, Chris. And I, I had a feeling this was going to take longer than we hoped, but here we are. I think what I'd like to hear from the planning commission right now is there is an outreach and engagement plan that I sent along in your packet, and I'm sure you've all read every, um, word of it. I understand if you haven't. Uh, what I'm curious about is if there's anything right off the bat that you feel we need to include in this, people we need to talk to, organizations, folks who really want to have a voice in this conversation? And other questions about maybe a, a future meeting with you or maybe setting up a working group that we can dig into the map issues a little more and maybe dig into a little bit more on how to roll this out to the community. Answer some of the questions that are likely to come up. Um, and, and set up maybe a few events where we can make sure that we're getting this right. We are going to ultimately want to talk to your select board about the tier one B designation. That's a specific thing that we need to hear from them about in this process that they have to make that decision on, probably sometime in the April, May timeframe. So we want to make sure that they're educated about what this process is and what those decisions will mean for Jericho. So looking for input on how you think we should go about that. I know we're not going to get all the information tonight. But if maybe we could get a volunteer or two to sit down and talk about this further with us. Or if you would like us to return to this meeting in open session to revisit or to, to work together as a whole group, that's fine too.
Let us get back to you on that. So I know there was a call, a, a light call to planning commission members to see who would be interested in working on this. So I think, um, unless anyone knows right away that they want to be on that working group or we can figure out who that is and get back to CCRPC. I see lots of yeses and I said two things, so I'm not sure. Yes, okay, so we will get back to you.
Yep. Okay.
This is Susan. I just want to weigh in on one thing. I think my preference would be that the subgroup or in the planning commission would do a little bit more work on the actual details of the map before we do too much community outreach. And the reason is because we just did so much community outreach to do the updated town plan. I kind of want to leverage everything that we've thought about and considered before going back and going back to the community, maybe with something a little bit more, um, baked rather than, um, throwing it out there, like what do they think? Because I think we already know a lot about what they think and we already have some ideas of adjustments to make to the map.
Yeah, Susan, I was gonna, I was gonna offer up that, at what would be really helpful is because we don't want to have fatigue and confusion, right, about the different layers of maps and what is this one for versus that one, knowing that we're about to do some pretty significant, um, proposals and changes around our zoning to be able to put like in a timeline. The integration of the timeline for what we're planning with the timeline during that year we're working for and then where and how that intersects with the educating educational opportunities and the back opportunities, I think would be wise for us so that we help ourselves and the community along and how the different pieces fit together.
I think those are great suggestions.
We're, we're good. Taking on that and through leveraging it, um, in, in the engagement part. One of the pieces that seem to be missing from your map and from your conversation is the firing range. Because they've got all kinds of issues around them for land use and potential growth in there, um, access to infrastructure and uses of it. Um, so I don't know where that fits into any part of the development, but it seems to be missing.
Yeah, we had questions about that too.
Fair enough.
It's been super helpful.
Yep. Great. And I, I love the suggestion that we lean on past engagement efforts. There's no reason to reinvent the wheel. We are aware of all the work that Jericho did on your town plan. We helped, uh, review that in our regional plan confirmation. So we've definitely want to take that as your community voice to the extent that we can, knowing that it wasn't, uh, it was done before Act one eighty-one happened. We just want to maybe confirm things still stand the same and that that feedback still applies. But that's certainly something we should talk about with the planning commission working group before we run out to the community again. So thanks for that suggestion, Susan and Heidi. We'll be in touch, it sounds like, about who wants to join in on that effort and then how best to, to roll that out. And maybe another meeting with Chris and one or two of you is the best way to flesh that out.
Great. Thanks, Darren. Um, so at this point, um, we have a small amount of time left for our public comment. But, um, we want to limit the comments tonight to specifically to Darren's presentation and the content of the slides that he just showed us, not so much what, um, what could happen in the future, but, but really what Darren gave to us tonight specifically. So um, is there any comment from anyone online or in the room regarding Darren's presentation slides? Michael?
Hi, thanks for, um, my name is Michael Elman. I represent the wisdom house group. I had a very simple question. Oh, I hope it's a simple question. We're wondering how, um, mixed use development will be handled in tier one B. It wasn't obvious what would happen if you were mixing non-residential uses with residential uses as is usually highly desirable of village centers.
That is an excellent question. Uh, so let me just make sure I got all the parts of it. How mixed use development will be handled in those act two fifty exemptions? Is that, was that what it was?
That's correct, in tier one B.
Yeah. Currently those interim exemptions are very specific to housing. Um, I believe the new exemptions are also fairly specific to housing, but uh, I need to double check on that because I do think that it might apply to commercial development as well, but certainly mixed use development to answer that question. If there's a housing component, that part is exempt, and I think the whole development is considered exempt if it has. It's the housing portion of mixed use development. Um, so I know it's not a super clear answer. I'll get back to you, Michael, because I need to brush up on that myself.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the room?
Um, Darren, I'd just like, my name's Jim Carroll. Um, I'd like to say three things just to make a comment. One, I think there's an incredible opportunity in Chittenden County and specifically in Jericho to get a lot of these heavy trucks, um, onto rail. If we could include in the regional plan, developing micro rail centers so that, for example, Richmond, Jericho and Underhill could receive all their softened sand into a small facility and not run trucks all the way up to Johnson. It's heavy and the rail works well and integrate with that a commuter rail system so that little micro stuff in Jericho could connect to the commuter rail and we could keep all the vehicles off the highways that nobody wants to build. Lastly, I've had some successful conversations with some planning people. Instead of these grandiose major uh, sewage plants with ten million dollars, twenty million dollars, thirteen million dollars. It seems quite feasible that we could develop organizationally here in Jericho a facility wherein we could create micro sewage and have it managed municipally, and that micro managed municipal sewage would actually qualify for the act two fifty exemptions because it's not a physical exemption, it's an organizational exemption. So I just think if we want to get something done in a reasonable period of time, talking about ten, twenty, thirty, forty million dollar sewage development is not going to do it in my lifetime. Um, and I'm hoping that will be longer than what it looks like, but, uh, I think that, uh, we could do resource place planning in Jericho, identify those areas that could, uh, have land-based sewage on them and then zone them very quickly and develop micro plans to actually put the sewage there, which would facilitate solving the existing problems in the village centers that we have, where we have well water in plumes of sewage and then integrate with that solving the thing that could burn down our village centers. And that's the absence of municipal water in most of our village centers.
Thanks for those comments, Jim. Big fan of the train thing. I hope that'll happen. Uh, we're working on that through some other projects at CCRPC. Maybe a little further off, but I'm glad you mentioned the onsite uh, sewage disposal because that is in fact, one of the criteria that is used to determine where village areas can be. So we will be looking at that and I think those are great things for Jericho to consider as you look at how wastewater treatment should be handled. And those are one of the questions we want to dig into with you about because I know you just had a big, um, wastewater feasibility study or scoping study, and we want to make sure that we're looking at all of those variables too.
Um, hi, I'm Elizabeth Bernstein. I've lived in three different communities, uh, since we came to Vermont, uh, in the late sixties. And, um, one was uh, in South Burlington with municipal water, but everybody had their own sewage. That always made me feel a little creepy. Um, the other was in, um, uh, the south end of Burlington where we had both municipal water and municipal sewage, but the sewage was about um, sixty or seventy or eighty years old and, um, was leaking um, directly into Angle, from Anglesby Ravine into Oakledge Park. And, um, that said to me, well, the, the living in South Burlington said to me, see if you can find a place with municipal water and sewage. And then, uh, when we lived in Burlington, I said to myself, the pipes shouldn't be made out of lead or wood and they should, uh, be designed to last for a long time. Now I live on Milo White Road in Jericho and we put in our own, uh, well, wells, because, um, water is now an issue. Uh, because we have a lot of people who are tapping into the aquifer and aquifers and, uh, we put in our own sewage, which is fine, as long as we don't have a lot of guests. So, um, I would like to encourage you, um, whatever plans you make for development and I really hope uh, we take lessons from other communities around us. And we really encourage cluster developments around, um, mixed use and city type settings. Um, we're all getting older. Um, and, um, for those of us who are, uh, would like to walk but not tripping over uh, tree roots and be able to walk to a cup of coffee or maybe to visit friends. Um, it would be lovely to have cluster housing, mixed use housing especially. But with, um, sewage and water provided, I don't care who, whose name is on the, the machinery, whether it's the, the communities itself or whether it's municipality or whatever, but whatever it is, it should be built to handle whatever we would like it to handle for at least fifty years. Please don't build anything that'll be good for twenty years. Because it'll be good for ten.
Takes twenty years to get it approved.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Heard you loud and clear.
I don't see any hands online, right? Okay, um, so I think, I think that's it for public comment right now. Obviously this is an ongoing discussion, so there will be ample opportunity for people to um, share their thoughts and you're always welcome to email Chris, um, and share your ideas with him that way. Um, so at this point, we're going to close this item on the agenda. So thank you very much, Darren, for making the time with us tonight. It was very helpful.
Thanks for having me. Sorry to run over.
Oh, no, it's not your fault. We're, we're talking a bunch. Um, um, so now we'll move on to item six, which is the, um, the draft bylaw amendment for residential density. And let me go back and get the presentations. Okay. So I'm now going to turn it over to Chris, I believe.
Yes, great. Um, thank you. So, uh, this is, I think, is this our second or third? This, this is our third discussion on residential density in Jericho. Today, the goals for today is to review and discuss findings on current, current density formula and some analysis. That's just going to cover that. Uh, approve, hopefully approve, uh, recommended by law amendments and a draft report. So you should have had a draft report. The draft report needs to be approved by the planning commission before we can move on to scheduling, um, a public hearing. Uh, one for public hearing and then considered one for public hearing. So, um, this, I know this says approve recommended by law amendments and draft report. Um, that's maybe a little more hopeful. I mean, I'm hoping that we're going to get, um, and then consider warning for public hearing. So those are the goals for this part of the agenda and I am going to hand it over to SJ. If you remember, this was, uh, actually I'm not going to hand it over yet. So I'm going to go through the project timeline. So we started this back in, uh, November. Uh, we've had a couple of meetings, um, SJ, Susan and I have worked on the draft amendments, which we're going to walk through today. Uh, hopefully, uh, we will, uh, have approval, decide a one. You can see where we are. Um, uh, once we are at that point, we will have one, we can have one public hearing for the planning commission and then we can board it out of the select board for them to take, um, whatever action they're going to take on it. So hopefully we will be wrapping things up here, uh, middle to end of next month. Now I'm going to hand it over to SJ. After thanking SJ and Susan for all of the work that they have done on this with me to get us to where we are today, it's, we've been, uh, they've done a really great job.
Yeah, and, and on that, that first slide, Susan's name should definitely be up there too, is, uh, I think, I think we all kind of shared, shared the burden pretty equally here. Um, so just to remind you, uh, on the scope of this amendment, we were really balancing a couple of different things. Um, we are focusing this on districts that are slated for denser growth, but really what that means is not changing density for the rural districts. So rural ag and forestry. Um, we heard loud and clear that any changes to that density is going to take more kind of discussion, discussion and in-depth analysis and an understanding of, of potential impacts there. And so this is narrowed to the remaining districts. We're looking to increase residential density, which We're looking to increase residential density, which essentially is number of units per lot in those districts. And really wanted to balance um wanting to keep this scope as narrow and focused as possible. With as little kind of red line change as possible, while also making sure that we're the changes that we make. Um, improve clarity as well as addressing the density issue to remove any kind of ambiguity. Um, about how one might go about calculating residential density.
Could go on?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay.
You can't read my brain. Um, so again, we've showed this slide every time. I think it's important to show examples of what uh multi-unit. Homes in Vermont look like. They do exist in our beautiful state of Vermont. Um, and really the situation, as you all remember, is that our current density calculation hinders missing middle. Um, multi-unit housing in the areas where we as a planning commission and as a town have said that we want it. Um, our current density limits either one single family home or one duplex structure per minimum lot area. Um, and so that means that three plexes, four plexes, though they may be permitted. In um, some of our uh residential zones, they require significantly more land. And thus, even though they're supposed to be a more affordable option, they become more expensive to build. Um, and again, we. We have the housing resolution, the town plan, um lots of different examples um to point to that this is uh within the scope of Jericho's goals. Go ahead. So the current amendment that we have drafted. Increases the density in uh low density residential village, commercial and village center districts. To four units per minimum lot. Um, so this is an example of a village uh district where the minimum lot is one acre. So you've got a maximum of four units there, which means you can build a four plus. Um, so there's two places in our current regulations where we needed to update text. The first one, the most obvious one is five point six, which is density. What we've done here is replace the general statement about um. A single household dwelling or one duplex and replaced it with uh language that points to the table below. The language also specifies uh residential density shall be determined by the number of potential lots. Meeting the minimum lot area, which is defined in uh standard dimensions in five point seven. And residential density for minimum lot area defined in five point six point one, which is below. So I I wanna just draw your attention to the section that says by the number of potential lots meeting the minimum lot area. And so if you're in uh, if you're in a village zone where the minimum lot area is one acre. But you've got one and a half acres, you only have one minimum lot area there. So you're not taking the four units per one acre. And so then thinking, oh, I've got, I could do six because I've got one and a half acres. It's how many minimum lot areas you have. That makes sense. And so that's that's what the the work of that that there is saying. Um, and then the table really spells it out for you. So the forest and rural ag areas, again, we haven't touched those. So what's in the table represents exactly what the language currently is. And then for the remaining district districts, sorry, um. We've specified that resi- residential density equals four dwelling units per minimum lot area. Does that make sense to everybody? Does anybody have any questions on those changes? Yeah.
Dwelling units. Is there anywhere that defines that as something other than? A single large uh building envelope as opposed to four building envelopes?
So there's dwelling structure, which is the envelope that you're kind of referring to, and then there's. Which is what's within the structure.
Okay, where where is that?
Those are defined in the definitions. That's a good question. I think we'll.
Yeah, hold on, we'll hold off. I will have public comment questions after. Okay, keep going. Yes.
And yes, anything else? Susan, you good?
Uh, yeah, we can do the next.
Yeah, I'm good. The only thing I was gonna say is that what SJ just walked us through is basically the way it currently works. It's just the language is more clear, the change is in the table.
Um, yeah, next slide. So the second place where you're calculating residential density is in the planned unit development review section. And. The first reason we needed to touch this section is because uh if you look closely what's crossed out there. You'll see that the language from five point six was duplicated here instead of just pointing to five point six. And so we needed to address that. Um, and then this is where um. This is where it, we felt a real need to make sure that the. The steps it takes to calculate residential density in a PUD were clearly defined. Their order was laid out because the order will really determine uh may get you a different answer. Um. Uh, and so again, the changes that we made are are just to update uh the density to four units. Per minimum lot area. Um, and then any of this of the rest of these changes. Are purely clarifying and we we went back and forth with Chris Flynn quite a few times to make sure that we weren't altering the current process, the current calculation. We were just trying to make the language of that process more clear. So the only um, the only substantive change is making uh the four unit per minimum lot area in those districts. Um, consistent by pointing up to five point six. And then the rest of the changes here are really uh clarification of the steps to go through um planning your density and uh. Potential bonuses, et cetera. Susan, anything else that I'm missing there?
No.
Perfect. Questions from the commission? On that?
Um, I was just, there's there's one and in ten point one, three point seven point one.
Mm-hmm.
It refers to table five point seven?
Five point seven is the table that defines the minimum lot area.
Okay.
So anytime we anytime we mention minimum lot area, we define it by pointing to five point seven.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So I guess now we'll have planning commission discussion first.
Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you guys so much. Um, do you and Susan want to field questions, have more to say? Do you have additional things you want to know?
No, I think it was really clear. Yeah. It's what it is interesting. Density in Jericho is so much controlled by the minimum lot size.
Mm-hmm.
Which goes all the way from uh, is it point five or?
Point two five.
Point two five in the village center up to ten, right? So um. And this wasn't stated, but I think we've talked about it before. This change is really allowing. The type of residential use that is allowed in a zone on the minimum lot size.
I think it's really clear, like the the work that y'all did is really clear. And I was wondering. Why you were a little bit like, I, from from my perspective, I think we can get to making the recommendation and accepting the report.
Great, because I didn't want to make any assumptions.
Okay, that was the, that's just my.
Not lying.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I think you laid the groundwork.
But I think, I do think though, and I think, you know, we have had these conversations before. So at one point, we kind of had either talked about or had written. Uh, a uh graph that shows that even though it's four units. Across the across those districts, again, because the minimum lot area changes across those districts. The like units per acre density really does change. So you see the nice gradual slope that I think we all imagine for those districts as they transition from more rural to village center. Susan, do you have anything?
Nope. I'm good. I don't have anything to add. You guys are doing great.
I will say that like I definitely learned a lot about process. Because this on the surface is a really simple, straightforward change, and it is a really simple, straightforward change. Uh, but the the process uh to make even such a simple change is um. Not insignificant. And I appreciate, I know that at one point we talked a lot about just thinking through the scenarios.
Yeah.
And what would it mean in various scenarios? So thank you very much, those of you who did the heavy lifting on the thinking for us.
Excellent. Okay, so can I move on to public comment?
Okay.
So we'll move on to public comment um for this discussion. And as always, um, especially because we're running a little bit behind. But as always, we will ask everyone to limit their comments to three minutes. Um. And. We will go ahead with that. So it looks like I have a question online. Um, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Uh, Lois Whitmore.
Okay, um, go ahead. You have a question, a comment about the topic?
Yes, well, going going back to the original planning discussion. In which um uh there was to be uh an assignment of a total housing. Target per municipality, which was a a finite number. I was curious about the sort of the chicken or chicken and egg effect of um. Ch- which choice of density changes. You did in relation to a housing target, which came first, or whether they were co-evolving.
Susan, do you want to take that?
Sure, um. They, I would say co-evolving is maybe a good word. So the housing targets that we just talked about with the regional planning commission. With is a new target that they expect to assign to Jericho and all the other towns to say. That our town should produce X units of more housing over the next however many years. It it's true, though, that Jericho already did our own analysis. Of our construction trends, our pricing trends. How much has been built in the last twenty years? How much has been built in the last three years? How much everything cost, where the locations of all that housing was? And we have already assigned ourselves a housing target. So um, and that was before the town plan. So we we, the select board adopted a housing resolution. That specifies a certain number of housing units, mostly concentrated in these growth areas. And then we have a new town plan in Jericho that reinforces that. And one of the steps in that town plan was to address this density. Um, the current density and to incre- look at, analyze. The benefits of increasing the density in those areas. So that's what this change is. So even if the regional planning commission never came to us tonight. The planning commission still was interested to pursue this change. So in some ways, we're like ahead of the game and um. We expect that the regional planning commission will assign us targets that are somewhat in line with the targets that we've already assigned to ourselves. And this change is important because it enables duplex, triplex. And quads, which are really the most um. The most important and the most accessible housing types for Vermont villages to be located in more parts of Jericho. Without requiring so much additional land. So their co-evolving is the right word because we were on an independent track. But I'm not worried that we're gonna have to rethink this. If anything, I'm thinking that we're gonna be ahead of the game again and in the right direction. And we will have already implemented what they're gonna ask other towns to do.
Thanks.
I add, it may be co-evolving with the regionals, the regions land use schools, but there is a direct line here in Jericho. Based on our town plan, based on the work of the Affordable Housing Commission. That made these recommendations that is that is leading to this. So there is more of a direct line within the town.
Um, comment from the room, Michael?
Thank you.
Go ahead and sit down.
Yeah, I I will do that.
Oh, you can't worry. I just have to track you.
I still will be great. Uh, my name is Michael Omen again, uh, Whistling House Group. Um, I had a quick question. I feel a little slightly hampered by not being able to see kind of what what has really happened here because I don't. My question probably is just, you know, sort of sitting over there and I'm just not seeing it. But um, it's my understanding that what this is basically doing is altering the density by altering. What used to be known as the single family land use, i.e. any place where a single family. Development could occur now can go up to four plus and that's this kind of like what's happened. So the the line in the table used to be single family is now something else. I'm not sure what that would be, but up to four. Um, however, um, as you know, we're very interested in multifamily development. And we have no idea how this affects that or if it affects that. So that's why I say I'm suddenly hampered by. Um, not being able to see what else is going on, nor do I know how um PUD may or may not be affecting us in the future, which also is affected by this. So um, I guess my question is, um, the the most simple straightforward way is I am assuming. But do not know that multifamily development is an entirely separate. Line item category and is going to be handled not as part of this, but as something else. This is basically is a replacement for what used to be single family development.
I think that's it. I I'm glad you asked the question because it's not exactly. So there's the table of uses, which tells you what kind of building envelope essentially. Is permitted in an area and this doesn't override that. So um. You you have to meet, you still have to meet your usual uh standard dimensions. You still have to abide by the table of uses. This is what you can use to calculate. Your residential density. And you're right in that. In the table of uses uh up to four plex, where up four plexes are, I think, conditional and then permitted is where we make these changes. So essentially, it's it, we're talking about the same thing, but I do think it's an important distinction. That this doesn't change the table of uses that still uh rules the day in terms of um. In terms of village center, I don't know, maybe Susan, you can you can talk to this a little bit better than I can or Chris. Boxing you out, sorry.
You guys are good. Fine. Great.
Um, yeah, so in the in the Riverside Village Center. There is already no density, there are already no density limits. Because it's a form-based code area. So the the um, the regulation is all around building size and building placement and block size and block placement. And so density limits are non-existent already in the Riverside Form-Based Code. And the changes that we are that we've looked at for that area don't change that. Um, also for this. There are exemptions for density limits for affordable housing or senior housing in any of the village centers. So if you're not in the Riverside Form-Based Code, but you are in one of the village centers. And you are building housing that qualifies as either senior or affordable. Those housing, those developments are also exempt. those housing, those developments are also exempt from density limits, but still have to meet all the other dimensional standards. And that is currently true and this does not change those exemptions.
And the use of multifamily is still a separate consideration from this and we'll go through whatever machinations it's going to go through.
No, there's no distinction between single, there's no if you're, there's no distinction. So if you are building, if as the table shows four units, that could be four single family homes, it could be two duplexes, or it could be one quad. And the regulation is agnostic about that in terms of the density calculation. Where it's not agnostic about that is in the table of uses, but in the table of uses, all of those housing, multifamily housing types are allowed, including apartment buildings of five units or more are allowed in the village centers, which is the area, I think, Michael, that you're most concerned with.
Yes.
I, yeah. Yes, so there there's no, there's no distinction really between single family or multifamily at all other than in those rural districts and and that's governed by the table of uses, not by the density calculation.
And Michael, you asked about how this might impact uh density for a P U D.
Right.
It does not change the method or process of how you calculate that density. That is still the same.
Well, but what I still don't know is P U D used to not be um uh accessible within the form-based code district. It wasn't clear how that would wait, how or if it would change.
That's still, that's still true, that the form-based code currently, the Riverside character-based zone does not allow and does not require P U D. Because the main benefits of a P U D are one, to allocate open space and two, to earn a density bonus. And the reason why a P U D is not necessary in the character-based zone currently and as it's David has been drafting it is because open space is not required and because density is not limited in any way, shape or form. There are no density limits in the character-based zone currently and there are none being contemplated in the draft. It's all about form and frontage and size and blocks and buildings. It's not about density at all. And so there's no limit to how many units you can put inside a building as long as the building meets the specs.
Good. Sounds sounds great. I'll be anxious to see what it actually looks like. And I can see, I like I said, I may just be asking questions about what would be obvious if I, you know, so.
No, I.
No, that's okay.
Acknowledge, this is part of the process that I have found particularly frustrating and enlightening is that uh when when we are um comfortable releasing a draft to the public. And that is just.
We'll be clear, I'm sure. Thank you very much.
Uh, it's it's a different issue, but around the same piece because essentially to to your question, though, Michael, if you had a four one-acre lots, you could put four building or one building with four units on each of those four lots, have a keyhole driveway with all the buildings in the center and you would be able to put up a sixteen unit, effectively a sixteen unit development in any zone in the town outside of the ones that are excluded from this rule. As long as you had water.
No. No.
Single structure.
No, you would have four, four units.
Yeah.
If you had four one-acre lots in a square, you could have four, four units around the center four.
That's true. That's true in the village district, but in the low-density residential district, which is actually a lot of the town, that's a three-acre minimum. And so remember, S J was saying that it's the minimum lot size that's the trigger.
But you could still do if all four units, all four lots had a common corner. You could send them around that one road and you would have that.
Sure, but in that case.
Well, your development, you have four lots. You would be developing each lot individually.
Yes.
Right? But if you had your four lots and they were all on one parcel, you would have four minimum lots that you would use as the basis for calculating your density. So on a four-acre site, you could have up to sixteen units and how you allocated them. If you were in a zone and allowed a multi-unit building,
Yep.
you could put them all in one building, but yeah.
Okay, so.
But that that's that's a rabbit hole. We don't really need to go down.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah, S J, Susan and I have gone down that rabbit.
Every rabbit hole.
Yeah. Some rabbit holes have foxes.
Um, hold on. So are there are there hands online that I need to account for? Okay. Um, you have questions?
Yes.
Okay, come up to the mic, please.
No more mic.
My name's Tom Dowd. Um, wanted to say thank you for all your hard work trying to amend the five point six and get some clarity. So a lot of the community thanks you for all your hard effort. Um, going on what you guys are to Eric, what you're talking about, if you theoretically have four one-acre lots, so right now you can put a four plex on a one-acre lot. Can you put two duplexes on a four, uh a one-acre lot?
And a P U D.
Without a P U D, just a standard lot, you can put one single family or a four plex?
Susan?
Yeah, so if it's.
Separate buildings.
Each one of two plex. Two separate structures, let's call them a duplex to give you your four units on that one acre zoning lot. I'm trying to understand the process here.
Yep, the current regulations with this change, say, would require that multiple principal structures on a lot requires a P U D. So S J was right. However, that is, we are considering changing that requirement as part of a larger set of zoning changes that the P C is looking at, that we're working on with a consultant that we are hoping to have implemented by this, you know, late spring, summer. I don't know yet what the upshot of that will be, but we have talked with the consultant about whether or not some residential developments could include multiple buildings on a lot and not require a P U D. But today it would require a P U D, but requiring a P U D is not the worst thing in the world.
I'm just trying to 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 say, is there a consideration? Because I think people, it's more attractive to have a unit that doesn't have a shared wall.
Mm-hmm.
So if you've got a four plex, you know, it it's, I would, I think it's more attractive if you have two duplexes or four single, like little small, like a little community. You have more density, less, you're not increasing the footprint.
I would love to see some cottage courts.
I mean, my my mom lives one down in Connecticut. It's, it was built in the eighties, it has eighty units and they're all staggered, the garages are detached somewhere. And it's just they, and everything's taken care of for them. They don't own the land, but they own the house, but the H O A takes care of the siding and roof.
So this change would allow you to do that. It's just that it, you would still be required to go through P U D review, which is has just a separate set of standards, but it's it's quite feasible. It's not an impediment.
Yeah, this change makes it easier to do that by one of the factors, which is how you calculate how many units you could include in that.
Okay, I'm just trying to, the the current regulations we have, I still can't comprehend because even in your presentation, you showed the Jericho duplex. Beautiful house along Route fifteen, the two duplexes. It's a one-acre lot. I think it was built in nineteen. And it's not a P U D, but you have two different structures. And I'm just trying to figure out how that got constructed.
That probably was a P U D.
It it's I, I I searched that and I didn't see that it was listed as a P U D. So I'm just wondering, you know, all of us are trying to figure out how is things getting constructed? And some things are being denied. It's just tough, tough to figure out what landowners can use with their land and what they can't. And that's just kind of an example. So, but that's all I have tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, I and I I think it's relevant to this conversation, but I overall, it's important feedback and I think that it's something that certainly in the Affordable Housing Committee, but I presume that the planning commission has heard that our our regulations are not as accessible and understandable as they could be. And while, you know, yes, I would love to have um some developers come in and I would love to, you know, see some some developments. I think that the housing that a lot of the infill housing that we're prioritizing is only possible with current landowners looking at their lands, thinking about what they what they can do with it, how they can move their kid who is starting a family uh onto their onto their parcel or, you know, asking the kinds of questions that you're asking and part of enabling and encouraging housing is making sure that you can get those answers uh really easily without having to have some expert or hire some lawyer to kind of go through. So I I it's important feedback.
Okay, great. Thanks. Great.
Do you have anything new?
Yes, I do.
Okay. We're running.
I know, I know, I see. So Bill Butler, Wisdom House, um, I just want to make sure I we we are interested in senior housing, but we're interested in mixing the generations. So when we do that, are we negatively affecting our senior accreditation by adding missing middle people into our mix?
I mean, I I don't have the current regulations in front of me, but my understanding is that there's percentages. If you if you look at the it's not, it doesn't have to be the entire development, I don't think, to get.
I think it's twenty percent.
Twenty, twenty, oh, because it was twenty or twenty-five.
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But again, not, we haven't done anything to that by changing this density.
Also, the age fifty-five, it's that's pretty forgiving. For a senior guest, I I would I would look at, from this end, that looks like junior to me, but.
Thank you.
That's Jim.
Uh, Jim Carroll, um, I'd like to thank the thoroughness and the professionalism that's been applied and the sense of urgency to this. We thought we dealt with it in two thousand twenty-two. Some of us have bet our bank on it and seeing this move forward, uh given all the goals, uh it's just, it's just awesome. It's a very significant and positive thing. And it avoids all types of other types of problems because we feel that it was actually done in two thousand twenty-two. Um, I think the Kate's food truck case in Jericho, it's a case on point that the intentions that you had in two thousand twenty-two was to do this. So by getting this fix done, it's an enormous benefit for everybody, including the town, that we can move forward and get something significantly done.
Thank you.
Question about your definition.
Sure.
P U D.
Planned unit development.
And and I, as I understand it, the development in Williston on uh off Tower Road is a P U D? And if so, how or how does a P U D difference differ from some other planned development?
So a planned unit development is a process where you have some flexibility from the regulations in exchange for doing some other things like maybe providing smaller housing units or portal housing or something like that. So for example, if you have a site and there's lots of um slopes or flood plain or natural resources, you would be, you might be limited in a standard subdivision in terms of how many lots you can do. But if you go through a P U D process, you can have smaller lots. So there would be a benefit from going through a P U D, but there's there's a more thorough review. You'd have to go to the development review board. It can't just be reviewed, but it was a little bit nicer. So uh what you're talking about in Wilson, it sounds like that that might be a large commercial development.
I think it's.
Yeah.
Uh, and and uh would a P U D apply to uh places where there's cluster housing or uh and mixed-use housing and then there's twenty open acres?
Yeah, a planned unit development. Um, our zoning has lots of guidance to reinforce that it's clustering housing in exchange for having larger open spaces. Yeah. Exactly the, one of the benefits of of why we won't be able to go through a P U D.
But but um quick comment, Elizabeth Bernstein, again, I'm always asking questions. Um, so when we first came to Vermont in sixty-seven, uh we bought land at the far end of Coker Hill Road, right near Cambridge, uh near the Downs Road. And um there was one light uh at the Five Corners in Essex between our lot and downtown Burlington. This has been the change in the last fifty-seven years.
It was long before that that there was no light in the Five Corners.
Oh, okay. So we went from no light probably at sixty years ago. Uh, and we have to plan for this, the mushrooming development in a way that is not just tiki-taki, has this, has this, has this, has that. I mean, we we gotta be smart and uh I think you you guys are setting out the rules for smart de- development and uh I I thank you for the hours and hours and hours of um sitting through um to make up these plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so I think in the interest of time, I think everyone has had a chance to speak, who wanted to speak. And we are now at the point where um we will close public comment and discussion and I'm gonna ask if members have reviewed the town plan or report that Chris submitted to us.
Before you move on, I thought we might have the opportunity to approve the changes, the recommended changes, so they can move forward.
Is that the next step or after this?
Yeah, no, we approved the changes after the public hearing to go forward. So what's on here is we would approve the the uh report that talks about the bylaw amendment and warn the public hearing.
Got it.
Right, the report needs to be approved before the the hearing can be scheduled.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you have a question. Um, I'm Bob Linda, I actually live in Underhill, but that's why I have an interest in in the Riverside development. And I was excited to hear about that, that something's gonna happen, but is there going to be, when and is is there going to be a follow-up on that specific project or potential project? Soon and when and if, when? If it's gonna happen, when is it gonna happen? I'd like to hear more about that.
Are you talking about the project specifically around the the market?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would, that would be um a a proposal from a property owner that would be discussed by the development review board. It would would not be discussed by the planning commission.
Oh, what is we would have what? Wisdom House doing? Is it your proposal, Bill, for the, for developing that field?
Yes, we're gonna have a public hearing, a hearing of interested people. Michael said he knows too. And so you'll.
I didn't recognize you from behind.
You'll be invited to, people who have interest in Riverside will be invited to.
Your name's already on the list.
Yeah, it'll probably be at the library, you know, and everyone can just.
Not to dissuade you.
You'll know.
Okay.
Thank you. And you know who to ask.
So can I make a motion to approve the bylaw amendment report?
Second.
That's what I was trying to get to. Thank you. I just didn't understand that.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so.
So we're gonna warn for the public hearing, right?
Hearing. Great. So I think with that. Great, so I think with that.
Does that need another motion?
Yes.
But yes, it does.
Would you like to make that motion?
I would like to make a motion that we warn a public hearing for February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
To discuss.
To discuss the bylaw amendment on density.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Eric, second set. All in favor?
Aye.
Turn meeting over to Heidi.
Oh, no, this is an old presentation.
That's it.
Okay.
That's okay.
Nope, you are good. Um we're just turning it over to Heidi.
Okay.
Let's just do that.
Well, I could, so let me just run through this while. So kind of have a report, just uh three things. So at the select board meeting on January sixteenth, the town's order going to amend them for approved. So that has been finished. Uh also, on Friday last week, I submitted two uh U P W P proposals to C C R P and C uh for Jericho, that's uh you um one was for some work on the natural resource overlay update. And I want to thank Tom Bearbo and uh Sabina for thinking through that and coming together with that proposal. Um and the other was a proposal for C C R P C to help us manage our wastewater study. Um and I want to thank Susan and Chris Brown for helping think through those and I've already comments on that. So we will hear in March as to whether or not those proposals proposals will move forward. Um I think there's a chance they might be both approved. I think both are really strongly aligned with the region's um Ecos Ecos Plan. Uh what I think is more of an unknown is the staff capacity of C C R P C and what they can do to step up and and do that, because they'll have proposals from across the region and they'll have to figure out which ones they they have the capacity to take on. So that's the second. The third is the bylaw modernization uh grant update. So I met today with David White. He is almost finished going through all of the comments from the Planning Commission. So if you remember, there were three batches. He's gotten through batch one and two. Um he's something he's get through batch three. Once he does that, um he and I are gonna regroup and figure out the best way to frame some things that slowly be discussed with the Planning Commission and bring them back to the Planning Commission for discussion. Um all of this will have to be wrapped up uh by the late spring and getting into the summer, so we can be done by June thirtieth with his contractors. That's what I got.
And then there was one other thing that happened at the Sledgeboard related to the budget, and if Chris Brown were here, we would be applauding. Do you want to share?
Well, why don't you go ahead?
I might not get the details right.
I I was gonna say I'll be happy to correct you if you get them wrong. I will, I will just second. So the uh select board did uh set aside a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for wastewater work. This is great. This is following up on the Planning Commission's recommendation to the select board. Um we know some of that money will um if the U P W P proposal was accepted by T C P, C C R P C will go for funding that. Um there was also um getting some seed money for a the wastewater committee to help them do their work. Uh and then there's just unanticipated expenses that could come up, so we wanted to have some money in the budget for that. So the full one thousand dollar request from the Plan Commission was approved incorporated in the budget, so it is awesome.
And if I could just add to our group, just as an F Y I, I was at that select board meeting and um they did comment that they appreciated the format and the um the way we made our recommendation and they thought it was it was in line with our um our discussion that we had in the summer and the fall about how we wanted to work together and collaborate and they felt like we we hit the nail on the head. So kudos to Chris and everyone else. So we're on the right track in terms of that.
Yeah, yeah, but but there was a comment that everyone kept thanking someone else for doing the work.
Yes.
Um and really, the the feedback from the Planning Commission about making it really uh short and um punchy on that front page to really do that bullet list was again, one of the things that came out of this group discussion that really made a difference in that matter. So thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Kudos. Okay, so it's just like we're gonna take one moment to appreciate persistence. The persistence of this group has paid off in a very like concrete way, so.
Bravo.
Yeah, I mean, these little, you know, you gotta celebrate your successes on the way, because this long-range planning is you don't often get uh ten something tangible. So.
True that. Um, okay, so you don't have a slide, unfortunately.
So I feel bad because
But that's okay.
I am gonna talk about.
Talk about the town down meeting is on Thursday at six o'clock. Um there's a a pre-meeting at five, which includes an optional dinner and there will be committee tables and the Planning Commission will have a table at that meeting and Heidi will be leading um our discussion now about what's gonna happen at the table.
Can you can I add back up a little bit? Can you clarify about the pre- a pre-meeting?
I mean, those five from five to six.
It's a gathering.
Sorry, right. That was awkward language. I get it now.
If Heidi's had a slide, you would understand, because there's a picture of Heidi at the table.
It's my contribution.
The meeting.
Got it.
In advance of the six o'clock.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
So so we wanted to think about, I just wanted to check in and see if anybody else was free and able to join me at some table. And if not, that's fine. I'm planning to be there from five to six.
I can float, but I'm gonna be at the D E I table.
Yeah, yeah, totally fine. But I think what is more important is um your suggestions on what should be on the table and what graphics. So we had last time noticed that our fellow committees had beautiful boards. Hmm, that since, I know, right? That had these beautiful boards that invited people over to understand what they were doing and we unfortunately didn't have one. And so it may or may not be too late to get one. Um.
I have that. I have like a show, uh you know, like backdrop and stuff like that. You need like a board, you can put things on, you know, people can come up. I mean, I do craft shows. You know, so we don't have a lot of time, but maybe
Right.
Want to just get in touch with me?
I might, I might. We were thinking that we had had some that we put together when we were doing the public engagement about like here were the pieces of the town plan that had some data.
We had all the maps.
How much space? Live in that closet.
Wish your time, but how much space did?
It's just a table. I mean, it's just a
And maybe something behind that you can put the maps on?
Yeah, do did. I want to thank you for your offer. Want to check and see if anybody knows if we have something
If we have.
That we can just pull out.
This is all Velcro back.
We have it in the closet downstairs. So it would just be a map, right? Yeah, and it and it's not self-standing. It needs to lean on something. So I think what Phil is suggesting is
Yeah, I can send you a, give me your email and I'll send you a picture of this, one of my
Yeah, if he's got, if he's got something, we just Velcro put a strip of Velcro on the back of the maps that we used for.
Put Velcro tabs on the back and.
Throw it onto yours.
Is that what we really want to bring out? Is the old maps? I don't think we're suggesting that.
I know, not not the old maps.
Right, so what are we gonna?
It feels like we should be posting things that are relevant to what we're working on right now.
Okay.
If if there's visual format.
But but we have maps of where, for example, the wastewater districts would be. That would be something to put up there and show this is, this is who will be benefiting from it. Here's how it will help us. Uh that would be a very powerful map. I'm thinking something else on which lots are now going to be available for the new subdivisions or multi-unit houses.
Now you're setting me up to have to answer questions that I am unprepared to answer though, Eric, so I don't want to do that. I love your concrete.
Chris can answer all of those. Well, I I can pull together a flyer that um summarizes like current work with the planning commission. So we could talk about it could have about the the grudge
Yeah.
Amendment, the residential density amendment and the bylaw modernization grant. So I can pull together and figure it as a summary of those things.
Okay, great. And then once upon a time, we had a one-pager that's had the like, the um at a glance.
Get it, the get it.
The get it done.
Yeah.
The get it done was a really helpful handout.
Yeah.
I thought you guys did great work on the town plan.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, that's new. It comes once.
Right, so we should still have the town plan there.
This is where a lot of our efforts went.
Yeah.
And there is, you know, a vision for the town. So you could share that vision.
Where's the graphic? That one is this one, yeah.
And then S J is pulling up, what you can't see is
This is the town plan, but it's the it's the kind of summary.
That one page of the town plan.
Oh, with the goal, with the goals and It's page eight, but yeah.
Yeah. Do you have access, Chris, to that? I I heard tale that there's a big duplicator map printer thing.
Yeah, we have a large printer upstairs. Um I don't know. I don't know if it's working, but I know there is. So I can, but what would you want printed on?
That one, that.
Is that something that we had printed large before?
No, we've never done that. So if we could print that one page large.
About that.
Thank you very much, Tom. That was a, that that would be right, because it it has sort of, here are the main goals and the graphics come out fits together.
Town and we can share, okay. A lot of people are interested in very municipal water coming in the future or
Yeah.
I'm having a flashback.
In the future.
You're having a laugh?
I'm recalling something that we put together and because we did have that, but it wasn't big. But it was multiple pages from that our town plan and maybe
I think it's just that we didn't have a big something behind us.
It wasn't just one thing. It was on, it was on foam core, but it was like three or four different eight and a half by elevens. Which still might be here somewhere in this building, should y'all run out of time.
Okay, Chris.
Wendy's not, Wendy's not hallucinating. So there was like a a poster board or foam core or something in that closet. There's an easel, there's an easel in the closet and I just printed out four pieces of paper on my home.
Email David White to see if he has anything from.
Okay, so take home, if you, so steps, Chris is gonna look in the closet. Hold me up there, please, right? And if you don't find what you're uh if you don't find what you're looking for, you're gonna email David White to see, perhaps he has it. And if, and then if not, we're gonna see if you can use your printer here.
Yeah.
Worst-case scenario, you are gonna send me some kind of file that I can send to like Kinko's or doesn't exist anymore.
Blueprints, et cetera, is very important.
Where are they?
Um they're down behind Starbucks, uh the French fry place, Shaw's. It's right behind there.
Behind Al's, Burlington. Where Al's is.
Where the regional jail is, should be.
Uh five guys.
Five guys, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Regional jail, yeah.
On shelter. Yeah.
Vermont Gas, Vermont Gas is also.
Gas is a better place.
Landmarks, right? We all culturally connected landmarks. And so, yeah, so Chris, if you could do that, I am, I am happy um to send it to them. I'm happy to and or pick it up or whatever is needed to get it from place A to place B. So just, I knew you have my, I'm gonna give you my cell phone number, because I'm gonna be on the road most of tomorrow. So texting me is gonna be easier. And then I will bill if we decide that we need your backdrop.
It's ready.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I don't want to derail.
Please.
But the biggest thing we have coming up for us is the approval of the bylaw bylaw modernization grant, what we're coming through with it, right? Wastewater is now in the hands of the select board. They're they're gonna push it as much as we can. But we will need to have a vote on that for the town. And presumably, David's gonna be done by June, maybe July. So we'll be in front of the select board for voting. It seems more timely that we should be presenting to the town. This is what is gonna be going on next. And this is something you're gonna be voting on within the next six months. So maybe we want to shift focus just a little bit more to this is what's gonna happen there.
Messaging.
Yeah, I think that if Chris puts it in his report of here are the things we're working on with, and he can use some color or bold to say this is what's coming next.
Well, I think showing showing the boundaries of what's gonna be in the new um village centers, one and two, what differentiates those, so people know what that means. Uh I think that would be beneficial to us getting that passed.
I fully agree with you and let's let's aim towards that. And if 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 we don't have that fully, at least sort of say teaser, here's what's coming. This is what you, and just, you know, sort of high bullet, high-level bullet points to just start the conversation thinking. I think you're right, that it's done too soon to prepare people for that thinking.
Jim wants you to have a petition there to get the select board up to five people.
I think there's, there's no
People are gonna be out there distributing those.
Yeah, there's gonna be.
Anybody not signed this?
Yeah, but we would, but that's on our agenda, so let's.
Yes.
We have to have this backdrop together by in in two days, is this?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna let everybody needs to talk, talk, and we're gonna keep moving.
Thank you.
So.
Not all in the same room, please, because then it's a quorum.
I'm just gonna go talk to Bill when we're done.
Um, okay, so are there any liaison reports for this evening? Um I don't know, Heidi, you want to give like a three-second update on our thing on that we did?
Sure, so three seconds. Sabina and I went to an awesome, it was the Vermont um Development
Community Development Association.
Community Development Association Annual Meeting. And um Tom was on, Tom, whatever is Dom.
Dom, Saint Cloud, from Saint Albans.
From Saint Albans was the kickoff. We got an incredible number of resources and suggestions and overview. And we will be writing that up and preparing it for you. But first, we're going to visit with the uh J C D C, the Jericho Community Development Corporation on Monday.
A week, yeah, Mon- Monday the twenty-seventh.
Monday the twenty-seventh, they have their meeting, so we're gonna cuddle up Sabina and I to put together our talking points of what we learned so that we can give them a little bit of an update and we'll be sure to share it with the rest of the planning commission as well. Super helpful and so germane to the work we're trying to um inspire.
Yeah. You know, um, anyone else?
Thank you for mentioning town meeting. Um yeah, please come and uh and please feel comfortable participating via Zoom if you're not in town or if you don't want to leave your house. We've gone to a lot of effort to make sure that that's that that's possible.
I don't I don't have any other updates, the energy this week. Um So, okay, so I'm gonna close that out. Um is there any other business that needs to be brought before the planning commission? Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so our next meeting is scheduled for February fourth. Um is there anything we need to do to plan for that tonight or? Okay. So I'm at the end of my script, yay. Um
Thank you, Sabina.
So I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded that motion.
All right, so we have made the motion, Wendy seconded, all in favor of adjourned the meeting.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Sabina.
Thank you, Sabina. Nice job.
Thank you.